Call the city council meeting back into session, roll call please.
Alderman Knite?
Here.
Alderman Coles?
Here.
Alderman Pisick?
Here.
Alderman Shockey?
Here.
Alderman Suback?
Here.
Alderman Tolemane?
Here.
Alderman Wesley?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Forum is once again present. Couple of things additional under Mayor's report. Remind everybody of the Wooddale Police Department's 23rd National Night Out, which will be August 1st from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM here at the City Hall and the Water Park Complex. There should be fun and games, including dunking police officers and the mayor. And Alderman Suback, if you would like to follow me in the dunk tank or any other Alderman, I'm sure the Police Department will make accommodations for that. Also Shirley and I came up with the, kind of the idea of performing or doing a citizens golf outing, a nightlight golf outing. We've reserved a date and time at Salt Creek Golf Course on August 26th. The fee is $45. This will be a nightlight golf event with the glow-in-the-dark golf balls and the glow sticks on the flags. $45 per golfer to include your green fee, dinner, and prizes. And you can keep your nightlight golf ball, so. Yes, sir. We don't have mosquitoes in Wooddale.
You don't have mosquitoes at Salt Creek Golf? Okay.
Anybody has any questions on that can call the City Clerk's office at 787-3709, 787-3709. Would you put that on the website, Jeff, when you get a chance? And that concludes my report. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one report. Staff has an update on our train station. Gary Holm, our City Service Director, and John Forrest, the Supervisor of Community Development, and I met with our architect yesterday about remodeling of our train station. Originally, we believed that the current train station, built in the '70s, was very solid in construction and would support a new roof and side canopies. Our building code, however, has been updated since that time, and to meet our own code, we would have to, we found out, we would have to add some steel supports for the roof and the canopies. We added a bathroom initially, thought we could get by with, you know, one bathroom, and then we found out we had to have two bathrooms, which now changes the scope of the project. That's the, the train station, actual drawing rendering is, is on display there. The idea of adding steel supports, a new bathroom, again, that kind, it adds enough cost to consider replacement of the entire structure, which we kind of talked about, but we were kind of concerned on the, on the cost. Staff now has recommended we knock down the current walls and put up new brick, which will also make the interior new. We had originally planned we were going to do something with the interior to get rid of that old tile stuff. However, now instead of covering that old tile, we would have new brick inside and out. Keep, we would keep the floor, of course, because it's a good floor, and the foundation, and build a totally new station. Everything in there would be new, new walls, new doors, new windows, everything. This, this would mean we would have a unique building in the center of our community that we could really be proud of, because there would be none like it at all. Of course, with the remodeling, you wouldn't notice the difference, but this would be a whole new building. It would be different from any other train station. We have already received $300,000 in donation from developers, and will be receiving another $50,000 from Wooddale Station condo when the, when we issue occupancy permits. Staff is proposed funding any additional cost out of the tourism fund, but we, we're projecting about $350,000, so really that money should cover a complete rebuild. You will be provided with the cost of the first plan, so you can compare it with the cost of the, of the, the second proposal, and the new preliminary plans will be available for review after the meeting tonight. We are only asking the City Council to approve the changes in the scope of the project, and Gary Holm will give you an overview, a little more detail on what we're doing with this, or what we'd like to do with this, with your approval.
Thank you. As the manager indicated, this is the first concept, the very first concept that was presented, the first concept that we all looked at and we all decided to, to proceed forward with. The concept had called for one small coffee serving area and one small bathroom within the confines of the existing walls. We went to the County Health Department and were basically informed that in order for this facility to meet their standards, we would have to have two washrooms. The consultant, our consultant architect, came back to us and said, certainly we can accommodate two bathrooms, however, that would mean the elimination of the coffee serving area, which I think was felt by everyone that this coffee serving area was a critical component to the project. That led us into then a discussion about expanding the building, and we had talked about expanding the building over here to create room for the two washrooms, and this space could become the coffee serving area. The original concept, the one that's on the board right now, was originally estimated, and these are only construction costs, not the professional services associated with them. The original concept was about $190,000. By moving to concept number two, which was the expansion, as well as, well, which included the expansion, was approximately $235,000. That did not include, however, the latest information, which, as the manager indicated, the walls unfortunately are not, not structurally sound enough in order to construct the new roof structure. The walls are just exterior brick and then interior glazed brick with no structural reinforcement in them, and they certainly met the building codes at the time, and they certainly are adequate for the small roof that's on there, but not, not for the uplift forces or the, or the rest of the proposed roof that we have here. So that said, in order, because the walls are not structurally adequate, the consultant is telling us we have two options, add columns to support the loads, or take down and rebuild the walls. Again, one of the major driving forces of this project is that our existing station is fairly ugly, and we don't, we don't want to rebuild an ugly station, and, and staff feels that the addition of exterior columns would just be aesthetically not, not very pleasing. So whether we, while we accept that option as, as an option, we just don't feel it's a good option for Wooddale. So we are recommending to take down the walls and to reconstruct the station. Again, the second option was $235,000, not including any of the structural improvements, so that, that's, number certainly would have gone up. And now that brought us, though, to the third option, which we're talking about, completely rebuilding the structure, and that estimate is about $305,000 construction cost. On top of the $305,000, we have architectural fees. If you recall, our, our architect is going to also double as our, as our construction manager, our, our general contractor for the project. We have soil borings that need to be done still, and we've already incurred fees for some site engineering related to the survey. So all those professional fees are going to be about another $45,000. So the 305 plus the 45 gets us up to the 350, and that's a number that we're, you know, confident at this point in time is a good number to proceed forward with. Certainly, the 305 will depend on our bid costs as they come in from our various contractors. So that's where we're at today, and our recommendation is to proceed forward, changing the scope of the project from what originally was, but in the end, we're going to end up with a structure that will now be made to last many generations into the future. And then if there's questions?
I want to hasten to add and reinforce that this is not an expense we're asking the taxpayers to pay. This is going to be underwritten by Giovanni Golo Polti Construction and Gagliano Construction have all underwritten the cost of this project. Alderman Knite?
Didn't we discuss at one point that we have to bring in a water service? There, there is no water service to that building now. What are the additional costs and how much?
The water and sewer services he has on his estimate, and his estimate, which you don't have in front of you, and I apologize for that, I have them tonight to hand out to you. The water and sewer services, he has plumbing, including fixtures, $36,600. So he certainly, certainly, again, with two bathrooms and a small sink, that's not $36,000 worth of plumbing. He has the, the provisions for the other, other water service as well, so.
Alderman Suback?
I want to get this project done more than anybody else, and I think we did a great job in gathering the money, and I always thought it'd be just as cheap to tear it down. The first station lasted 36 years, or whatever, it was built in 1970. I, I think when we originally talked about remodeling this, we were worried about the facade and worried about how it looked and making it functional with the bathrooms and a coffee shop. If we are going to tear this down, I don't think it'll be that much of a delay. I don't, we don't have to go to a different architect, but Metra gave us a disc of showing all the stations across the Metro Line. We went around, photographs are somewhere, to different towns looking at their train stations. I really think it wouldn't hurt for one meeting with this architect to say, okay, now that we're going to tear it down, make sure everybody's satisfied with the design, because I think this design is good, is it great? You know, it was, to me, it can maybe get a little bit better, knowing that this is going to be around for 30 years, and this is going to maybe be a real center point. So I would at least like to give the architect that opportunity to say, let him tell us, what else improvements would you change? Would you make a higher roof line, so it's more visible from further away? Because this was fairly low right now, but make some of those changes, so it would really be a centerpiece. Then I think in the future, you're going to, your add-on costs is where it's, you know, the lights, the clock in the future, the additional landscaping, the bells and whistles will be future budget items, but we have $350,000 of donated money, even if the city had to pay out a tourism fund, $100,000 of our own, to really get what we want. I mean, we've been waiting 30, or 10 years for a new station, even to wait another six months to make sure the design is proper. I think that's time well spent, unless everybody's convinced this is exactly the, the design they want.
If I could comment to the, actually, again, this is the original structure, and obviously in elevation view, that's the original structure. So the proposed structure is stretched a little bit, obviously, to, to accommodate the expansion, and in the latest revision, the architect has deleted the inset dormers and replaced those with skylights with the vaulted ceiling in, in the lobby, so. The, the proposed plans, again, are in the background, we can look at them after the...
What was the facade going to be? Was it cinder block, or are we going to do decorative brick?
Well, having to rebuild the walls, the walls themselves will be from a manufacturer by the name of Atlas Block, and they're an eight-inch-thick block that will structurally support the roof, but also can be insulated, you know, to provide insulation. So on the exterior, it will be like a brick, they're four by eight, four by, four by eight by eight, if I recall, so that they're going to look like brick on the outside, and on the inside, they're going to look like brick. There'll be two finished surfaces, and, and then sort of look like brick, and then along the top, they're still planning to do this accent strip, and a series of four by four or four by eight, so many different tiles, and, and they even talked about, and it was kind of a novel idea, since the wall's going to be eight inches thick, they talked about doing some glass block, some eight-inch-thick glass block, so that the light from the inside of the station can actually come through, you know, various locations up here. So they're, they're working on those details.
What about the height of it? Because, again, now if we're trying to make this a centerpiece, I think, should it be maybe, you know, a story and a half height, you know, make it a little bit larger, again, to see it from further away? Because this, right now, the ceilings in there are probably seven feet high.
Yeah, the interior ceilings are, are low in there. The, I'm going to use this one, even though we know it's changed a little bit. This area, the area that will remain a common area, will have a vaulted ceiling with exposed timber trusses, and then like a tongue-and-groove type sheathing on it, if you will, so that it will, will give the appearance of a vaulted, you know, roof with the timbers. The areas over the coffee serving area and then over the washrooms will be just standard height ceilings with, actually drop ceilings in them. So, yeah, you're suggesting, though, and, and, you know, of going back and possibly relooking at it, I don't think we're going to lose many, much time at this point doing that, and I think we can still do that.
I like the idea of going back to the architect and taking a second look, since we're not tied to this footprint anymore, because I think one of the things, the station is partially obstructed by Christie's line of sight from Irving, if I'm not mistaken, and if they can move it a few feet one way or the other to increase the visibility, that would be an option as well. Alderman Shockey?
Yeah, I think it's a no-brainer if we have the architect look at it, but I'd just like to ask John Forrest, if we left one of the walls and we applied the 75% rule and made it under 30 feet, would we still have to get variances? No need to answer.
Alderman Tolemane?
Yeah, I'd just like to point out, I mean, if in fact we do move the station from where it is today, I mean, there is going to be additional costs involved, because one of the, one of the things that I heard right off the bat was the fact that we plan in keeping the floor and the original footprint as far as the actual base of the, of the building. So if you start moving it, you're, you're going to start increasing your costs, because now you're going to have to build a new foundation, you're going to have to build, put in new flooring for the whole thing, which is a lot more expense. I mean, I don't have a problem bringing in an architect and, you know, talking about maybe a different style or whatever, okay? You know, I think this, you know, I think this is, this is fine, but I think we need to stay on that footprint, and if anything, maybe what you can do is, Gary, you were, you were talking about, you know, that front there, that, that front part down there, maybe one of the things you could do would be to have the glass block put into City of Wooddale and have it lighted behind it, so that, you know, when you're walking down Irving Park Road, or you're coming up down Irving Park Road, and you see it, it's, it's emboldened or emblazoned within the actual building, or emboldened within the building itself. I think that might be a, something we could look at, too. And if the cost isn't that much, I mean, why not do it?
The comment, this is the structure, or this is the existing depot. These are the tracks, which would place Christie's kind of down in this area, roughly. Right now, they were talking about expanding the building to include the washrooms on this side. Perhaps we keep the existing structure here, utilize the existing foundation, the existing floor, and maybe do the addition on this side, flip the whole plan end for end...
Right.
So that we're not putting ourselves farther behind Christie's, but we're actually getting out on the other side a little bit more.
Because you can always move, if you're going to rebuild the whole thing, you can always move your doors.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, bottom line, so you can still end up putting your bathrooms on the east side of the building, okay, in existing, okay, but just expand the footprint further to the west.
Right, yeah, that's what I'm thinking, yeah. That's a good, good idea to get out behind Christie's.
Mr. Williams?
Yes, the, the idea of bringing this to you tonight was to get an idea, if you agree with this concept. We had planned to bring the architects actually back when we, he completed the preliminary plan, which we have part of the preliminary plan for you to look at. We were going to answer some of these questions after this meeting, but the, the truth is, the architect is very excited about this. He's got some very innovative ideas. He wants to be able to point to this and, as one of his creations. He has ideas about the color, the colors, and I would like to have him share those with you, and you can be as excited as we are. We did get to talk to him. We have a meeting set up already next week with Metra to get them on board. They had been kind of dragging their feet, and we found out why. The person that we were working with has been promoted, now we have a person that is going to be here all the time with us. They want to get this done. Metra, when they see this, they'll probably chip in with the lighting on the platform, and we did check into the possibility of moving this thing in the future, but in the reality, according to the plan that was just presented, and according to Metra, that the cost right now, it's not in the future and probably won't be for another 30 years. This structure, according to the architect, will last 60 years.
Alderman Suback?
I, I agree, but remember, we have $350,000 of donated money, so, again, if it's going to be there for 30 years, don't cheap out. If it's going to cost another 50 grand to get it done right, get it done right. Gary, can you explain, you had said the floor might not be able to be saved with respect to if we had to move the water? You had mentioned that if they had to move a water supply, that it might be cheaper, again, just to take the floor out and move the entire...
Yeah, I think, I think the concept right now, again, from a cost standpoint, was for them to maintain the existing terrazzo floor, but as we go through the process and we start thinking about installing water services, and we start thinking about doing the demolition, and we start thinking about all the actual real details, once you get beyond the concept stage and into the details, we may come to the conclusion that, that maintaining the existing terrazzo floor just may not be worthwhile. It might be simpler to just put in a new floor, so.
As well as the width, I mean, I know, I thought it would be built on a slab, so I don't know the requirements of, you still need a foundation when you have a slab? I'm sorry, okay. But again, we got $350,000 donated money. If we need to make it wider, expand the foundation, make it wider, make it really usable, because obviously it's not moving and it's going to be used by the residents for the next 30
Thank you, sir.
Do you want direction, or a motion?
I think it's going to come back to us with the architect, I believe, is my understanding.
Okay, so...
I just think the architect should come, don't let the architect start doing the plans. I think you bring the architect, or some of us who are interested can attend the meeting with the architect before they start doing those final plans, so if we want to make some changes, we can get those incorporated right away.
You have your direction you need?
Mr...
Alderman Tolemane?
Mr. Mayor, I know, I know earlier, well, we talked, and if we were going to rebuild this, we were talking now about maybe sometime in the first quarter of next year it would be done. I mean, it is getting pushed off more and more. However, if we're going to do this, could I suggest maybe that we do have a special meeting in, the first meeting in, in August, bring in the, just for that purpose?
Yeah, I have no problem calling an extra meeting as soon as everybody's ready.
You know, so the first Thursday in, in August, instead of not having a meeting, we have a meeting. I mean, and we just, for that sole purpose.
We could pay the bills, too, probably, but...
Right, we could do that, too.
I think we have a consensus on that. You have the direction you need?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anything else under manager's report?
Nothing more.
That brings us to the consent agenda. Is there any objections, any items on the consent agenda? Alderman Shockey? May I have a motion to approve the consent, the items, the agenda?
Second.
Alderman, favor say aye.
Aye.
Post that carries. Now may I have a motion to approve the items on the agenda, being an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 7 of the Municipal Code of the City of Wooddale, provide for elimination of the position of city collector. An ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 6 of the Municipal Code of the City of Wooddale to provide for appointment of the city attorney, changing his designation to that of an executive officer. Resolution authorizing execution of a contract for professional legal services between the City of Wooddale and Bon Dixon and Associates. Approval of agreement extension of sales tax incentive for Maher Lumber. An ordinance authorizing the disposal of personal property. Approval of Georgetown sidewalk agreement. Approval of public utility locate service proposal, and approval of disposal of surplus equipment. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Suback?
Yes.
Alderman Knite?
Yes.
Alderman Pisick?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Tolemane?
Yes.
Those items are approved. Item 1 is approved as ordinance O-0644. Item 2 is ordinance O-0645. Item 3 is resolution R-0615, and item 5 is ordinance O-0646. Community economic development, Alderman Tolemane?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to enter, enter into a contract with Kane McKenna and Associates for Phase 1, TIF not to exceed $7,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Suback?
Yes.
Alderman Knite?
Yes.
Alderman Pisick?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Tolemane?
Yes.
That passes?
That concludes my report.
Finance and administration, Alderman Coles?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of...
On the council agenda?
No, this is my, I'm sorry. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I... I'd like to make a motion of an ordinance proposing the establishment of a special service area number D3, I know, in our Concord subdivision in the City of Wooddale.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Suback?
Yes.
Alderman Knite?
Yes.
Alderman Pisick?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Tolemane?
Yes.
That passes ordinance O-06-47.
I'd like to make another motion for an ordinance proposing the establishment of a special service area number D4 for the Polte Prisonal Park subdivision in the City of Wooddale.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Suback?
Yes.
Alderman Knite?
Yes.
Alderman Pisick?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Tolemane?
Yes.
That's approved as ordinance O-06-48. Thank you, sir. Public health, safety, and judiciary, Alderman Pisick?
No report, Mayor.
Planning and zoning and billing, Alderman Knite?
Okay, the first item is an ordinance granting a variance to lot width and lot area to allow for the construction of a single-family home at the properly commonly known as 317 West Carter, Wooddale, Illinois. I'd like to make that a formal motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Suback?
Yes.
Alderman Knite?
Yes.
Alderman Pisick?
No.
Alderman Shockey?
No.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Tolemane?
Yes.
That's approved as ordinance O-06-49.
A second item is an ordinance granting a northside yard variance to allow for the construction of a second-floor addition at the properly commonly known as 121 South Cedar, Wooddale, Illinois. I'd like to make that a formal motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Make a motion to table?
Yeah, instead of the motion to approve, I can motion to table. The full council's not here, and I think that this was such a contested issue that the entire council should be here for this vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alderman, favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Opinion chair of the ayes have it, that carries.
Okay, the next item, excuse me, is an ordinance amending Chapter 12, the Municipal Code, City of Wooddale, to provide for amendments to the City Code regarding demolition and reconstruction of property in the City of Wooddale. I'd like to make that a formal motion to approve, and on the question?
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question, Alderman Knite?
Yes, under paragraph 4, under the rebuilding regulations, I believe when we discussed this in committee, that, we said that if there are any variations or subdivision waivers, applicant will be required to receive consideration approval of either the Zoning Board of Appeals or the City Council, or both. I believe we stipulated that with each case to be judged on its own merit and not by precedent. Like to just maybe ask the attorney if that was, if that could be added, or no.
Mr. Bond?
It's really not necessary, because under the rules that govern, they, each request would have to be judged on its own merits. There's, there's not an establishment that would restrict that. Obviously, you want to have some consistency, but you are obligated in order to make those findings, they have to be judged on their own merits. So you can put it in there, but it would be superfluous to what the current requirements are.
Okay, and also, on that same, it's designated as number 4, but I didn't see any twos or threes. It goes from Section 1, and then it goes to Section 4. Could that be Section, or 2?
Mr. Mermius?
Yeah, we, we noticed that early, and we're going to make the appropriate change to that.
Anything further? Alderman Tolemane?
Excuse me, it actually has to do, it doesn't have to do with the specific building and zoning and teardowns, but yet it does. In the packets, I just want to point out that in, in everybody's packet they received last week, there was an article that was put in that I strongly recommend that everybody, if you get a chance, to take a look at. It was called, "How Big Is Your Faceprint?", and it, and it's another community in the country that was dealing with the quote-unquote McMansions. So if you get a chance, please take a look at that article, because it has to do with teardowns and trying to legislate teardowns. It was a pretty interesting article. Thank you.
Anything further? Alderman Shockey?
I believe the, I'm sorry, the zoning board of appeals, Monday, talked about the proposed teardown ordinance, and they mentioned that adding language to any such ordinance which would address the issue of compatibility of new or remodeled residences to the other residences in the area, also then an architect or other design professional be included in development, such language as a guide and drawing up the ordinance. I still think this way. I think they have a good idea with this. Exactly how, they don't say. I wish they did, but the ordinance as it stands allows everything and anything, and I would like to see some kind of language saying, there's got to be some moderation. Alderman Tolemy, last time I mentioned about houses being in a year or two, going, people going bankrupt, and those houses are going to be sitting there up for sale, and at those prices, nobody's going to be able to afford them. We're going to have empty houses, they may be large, but they're going to be empty, sitting around. So I'd still like to see, see something talking about moderation of building.
In my judgment, that kind of a discussion belongs in the committee, and certainly we have the opportunity to, should this pass, amend this at a future date, but that's probably not best done at a council meeting.
Alderman Subak?
And again, the goal of this was not to change any of our codes, just to memorialize so that people could understand what nuances the Wooddale code has, what height restrictions we have, what type of permits are in need, tree preservation, it's just to ease with residences, residents and developers, when they do a teardown, this is kind of a guideline on what they're going to need to follow. It doesn't address any of those other issues, and as I said at committee, I think those issues with respect to having an architectural review board on ArchTech are too subjective. Who's going to be the architect? Is it going to be somebody progressive? Is it going to be somebody eighty years old? If you look at what staff gave us, they gave us memo dated July thirteenth on height restrictions, I know that was one of the concerns. You know, we're at thirty feet, we're actually more restrictive than most of our surrounding communities. Almhurst allows for thirty-five feet, I task a thirty-five feet, Wheaton thirty-five feet, so we're, being at thirty, we're actually more restrictive than many communities are with respect to height restriction. So again, I think we need to be respectful for people's property rights, and don't really tell them what they need to build, let them build what they want. Thank you.